To the workshop session of the Mayor and City Council of the City College Park, I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. We have a quorum present with council members Karn, Arnold, and Gaye, and so we will get started at 6:01 PM. The first item on the agenda is a discussion of the citywide events from our Director of Recreation and Cultural Arts. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, good evening, Council. So I just wanted to come before you because I wanted to make sure we can have a discussion of what we're looking for for the upcoming events. Typically in the past, the dates for the Christmas holiday events were the only activities that we would put on. We're just reviewing and making sure that this is what this event wants to do. So we've got the holiday events, and then we've also added some cultural arts events along with some collaborative events that we've been doing with other departments. So with the special events holiday, we have the light up College Park with the Tinsel Trail, with CPMSA, which is College Park Main Street Association, which has been an event we've been doing for a couple of years, which has been a really nice event where we were encouraging people to sponsor a tree and come out and decorate it, and they do a contest for that. And then we have our annual light up College Park with Mr. and Mrs. Flora. And then our College Park Christmas Parade along with Santa Coming to Town, which was fairly major. I think it's supposed to be the fourth year, if I'm correct on that. That was something that came out of COVID to be able to spread some cheer without being in person. I think that was something that was brought from a one-on-one, from a citizen, and it was a new event that we brought in, and it was a great collaborative event also. And then we're also looking at some other events that we've been doing with the Black History Cultural Arts Event, Black History Program, along with the Women's History Program. And then there's some other activities that we don't have dates yet for. We're looking at the White Scroll that we typically did with CPMSA. Also, we do a senior by seniors performance that's normally at the Tracy Wyatt Center that we honor those for older Americans.
Oh, there we go.
That's working.
I hope everybody could hear me. So then we also will have our Juneteenth Celebration, which was our first annual last year, which was a great event with the parade, along with festivities for kids on the lawn, along with music on the lawn. So that was a great event. And then we have our Senior Thanksgiving Luncheon that's coming up in the next two weeks that will be hosted at the Brady Center. We tried to move that event around too. It's been at, I'm sorry, it's at the Wyatt Center this year. My apologies. Yes. Can remember last year better than this year sometimes. And then we're going to have our Annual Easter Egg Hunt, which is our tradition that we've done also. Some of them are cultural arts, or some are just recreation activities that we've done. So I wanted to just sit down and/or stand up in front of y'all and have a discussion about what y'all might want to do moving forward so that we can account for that in the future for the budget and just have some open discussions.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We'll start with Councilmember Karn.
Thank you, Michelle. We talked earlier outside in the hall. All right, there we go. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Michelle. I remember we spoke briefly out in the hall about the events, and one of my concerns had been, you know, even the last couple of years was in terms of the Christmas stuff. A lot of it leaned towards, you know, a little towards the north side of town. I see you spreading it out a bit now. I still thought figuring out a way to log- Something on Godby Road in terms of one of the parades would be nice, but I know logistically it's a lot harder than Main Street, apparently. But I don't know, at some point, I'd like, I would love to figure out some kind of a way we can be able to get, you know, facilitate a parade in other places. And I know that's, like I said, logistically, I know it's not easy. But at some point, I want us to see if we can figure out and come up with a way that it might be possible at some point, but.
So I got Chief Rogers here because we have had some logistical discussions about it because we were ready to roll with it for Juneteenth. And then I, you know, I want to defer to Chief on that.
We've discussed it with the impact of the original route from the Phoenix Executive Park to Garden Rec, the impact of the businesses and apartment complex because the road, every entrance would have to be shut down for about an hour, 15 hours, 30 minutes. We couldn't allow a lane to stay open due to the liability. If someone even traveling on the opposite side or something happens, the city would be liable. The only option that may be feasible is starting at the Discount Mall and traveling to the Wyatt Rec Center for the Christmas Parade because we want to impact 2301, 2315, and 2200 Godby, which is the major complexes on that end of Godby. They wouldn't be impacted, but we would have to get approval from DOT to shut down Godby and Old National, and they usually has to be done 30 days before the event.
Well, I heard you mention the one hour to one and a half hours, and my thought, I said, well, you know, even if it were, you know, hypothetically speaking, a Sunday parade, one hour on a Sunday, if it's timed right, even one and a half hours may not be that big of an impact along Godby. But I don't know, again, I'd just like to see if we at some point can do something that works that doesn't, you know, make it so difficult for, you know, we don't want to make it difficult for residents, but if we looked at a Sunday, even, you know, an hour, at some point, shouldn't be too much impact, I would hope. I mean, just depends if we do it a Sunday morning, just like we do early on Main Street, maybe. So I just want, I wanted to, you know, just talk around it, and, you know, I only have a small, a portion of Godby Road. Councilwoman Arnold has the majority of it.
The biggest thing would be if we come from the Discount Mall to the Rec, we would have to get approval from DOT to shut down Godby and Old National. There's no way around that.
Understood.
And coming up from Phoenix Executive, it would just be those apartment complexes and businesses in that corridor that may be affected by the shutting down of traffic. But however the council want to go, we'll make it work.
Councilmember, I'm sorry.
And the Santa Coming to Town. So I understand we're not going to do the toys this year, is that right?
So Amazon in the past donated funding for us to purchase the toys, and that was done through CPMSA, which was the nonprofit. I have reached out, we've spoken. They're doing an NFL literacy kickoff in January, and they were looking, and this has not been ironed out, but to donate books for a literacy, which I thought was a fantastic collaboration with the NFL, with us, with Rec, with the city. So we were looking at hopefully books for donations for that. I know it might be a little difficult too after giving out toys, so we're going to try to see if we can supplement some sort of balls, something that would be still themed with balls and dolls is what we kind of talked about with team, you know, to kind of supplement with the books, which I thought would be fantastic, any donation that we can get to help with that. I've also reached out. I received an email today regarding, I tried to get some free bikes. Soccer in the Streets, I had a representative reach out to me, and I have secured a few bikes, so I wanted to talk to y'all on giving out a few bikes per ward. Maybe you're choosing per ward. It's not a lot. I was hoping for 50 to 100, but it's just a small number. But at least each ward could be able to choose a family that they would like to give bikes. It's a little different. They will have to literally go down and pick them up to, they size them for their helmets and for the bikes. So it's a really nice, so we've got a little something coming, but nothing any, you know, the thousands of dollars, but anything helps to help a family out for the residents and the citizens.
Well, also, you know, we, in addition to Christmas events, we did partner with the Helping Hands Group that's going to be on December 21st at the Convention Center. Now, that company has given us 4,000 armbands for our residents, I guess 1,000 bands per ward, to give out to our parents and kids for that event, where they're going to be giving away a considerable amount of toys. And I didn't know if y'all would consider maybe merging that with the Santa toys or not, or if we do both, but there'll be toys at that event, and they're getting donations in for that now as we speak, working on that. And that should be a pretty, pretty good event. They've done that at Henderson Arena for the past over 30 years, and Henderson Arena closed, so they, we worked, negotiated a new home for them at the Convention Center for our kids primarily. So that's another toy distribution point that could be a possibility, but the bands are for our parents and families specifically, and I'm going to start distributing them after Thanksgiving myself and getting them out to parents and kids in my ward to come and get toys. So I don't know if that's a better situation or if we go with the same thing we've done with the fire truck, be it books this time. So, all right, well, that's, that's just my, those are my comments.
Councilmember Arnold.
Okay, so I agree with Councilwoman Karn, and I think I've already emailed and shared my thoughts and my concerns about including Godby Road some type of way in the parade, simply because the bulk of the children live there. And so, and a lot of those families don't necessarily have the transportation to make it to Main Street. So I agree if there is, if there's some way that we can logistically make it work, maybe it's, you know, going from the Kroger Plaza down to Southampton Plaza, something, you know, not, that won't impact West Fayetteville Road or Old National Highway, and do that for maybe an hour on a Sunday, just to make sure that we are touching those families that don't get to see this or haven't been, been able to see it in the past few years. Those are my, those are my thoughts. As far as everything else on the calendar, the activities, they, they look good, they look inclusive, you know, what we discussed earlier this year, to make sure that we were thinking about all of the wards and being inclusive there. But if there is a way that we can logistically make that Christmas Parade work on Godby, I would like that.
Okay.
That's it.
Councilmember Gaye.
Mr. Johnson, I don't have anything. I just asked that you do your event calendar for the full year, I'm just showing spring.
Well, it's based on budget, so, yes, and the date. So what we are working, you know, cultural arts is not new, but it's only about seven years, so we're still trying to work in budget along with the grant award. You know, I do Fulton County Arts and Culture every year, and so it's depending on, you know, funding, you know, we would love a robust cultural arts, you know.
Specifically, I was speaking of Kids Fest and War for Citywide.
Yeah, and that is something that was always budgeted just for city, for the city budget. It was never in specifically for ours, but absolutely, if that's the direction that y'all want to, when we look at budget, I think they'd always-
Add it to the calendar.
Oh, to our calendar. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've always just dealt with the recreation and cultural arts, but yeah, we can do that. Absolutely.
Because it's at the park.
Yes, sure. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
And you all are so heavily involved in both of them, you're part of it anyhow, so.
It makes sense.
I mean, you put it on your calendar, we, you know, we're still going to do it how we want to do it, I guess, but it makes sense to, you know, I mean, half your work is going to be at both events anyhow.
Right.
At the end of the day, so.
So we're looking at that second weekend of October every year, is that what you're planning?
It's the second Saturday of every year.
Okay. And then for you, Councilwoman Karn, for the Kids Fest, do we know, is that typically the same?
My date moves depending on the first day of school for that next school year. Generally, Kids Fest is the Saturday before the kids go back to school.
Okay.
So whatever Saturday that is, I guess we plan for that Saturday.
Okay, and that'll be helpful, too.
Councilmember Arnold.
I have just a request, Mr. City Manager, just based on what Councilman Gaye just said. If there is a way that we can have like a comprehensive calendar, right, that includes all activities, then that way it may make it a little bit easier. We'll have what's happening in Rec, we'll have whatever our initiatives are, and the citizens will also be able to see everything that's going on, opposed to us just having just a list of recreational things, and then something else comes up later, and then something else comes up later, right? So if, if it's a way that we can implement a comprehensive calendar for the city, I would recommend that.
City Manager, also, Councilwoman Arnold, she touched on the parade again, and, I mean, the difference is between Godby and Main Street. You know, Godby is a, it's a four lane, right, with a, with a, I guess five lanes if you count the middle lane, is that, is that right? It's just four lane?
It's four.
It's a four, right, right, it's a four lane. And so parading half of the street, you're saying is a nonstarter in terms of safety wise? Okay, so if we can't parade half the street, but, you know, my thinking is this, you know, a Sunday, 10:00 AM till 11:30 AM, I don't think it's going to have a heck of a lot of impact outside of maybe Midway Baptist Church. I mean, again, at the end of the day, the majority of that route is going to be Council, Councilwoman Arnold's, you know, on her portion of Godby Road, but I got a lot of kids on the other side of Godby Road, folks that would love to see something and have the experience. I guess it would depend on, you know, how much blowback you think someone's going to have, you know, 10:00 AM Sunday morning. I don't, I, you know, I don't know if you're going to have that big of an issue there outside of Midway, and we have to try to, I don't know how we figure out something for that, but.
We will reach out to DOT tomorrow, since it is in the talks of moving it to Godby, to see about the approval. I would need a timeframe and date to make the request, so.
Well-
City Manager, if you could just get me, once the governing bodies decide what day they want the Christmas Parade on, I need that as soon as possible because we're getting down to the wire, usually takes 30-day turnaround. Give me the date and timeframe, and I'll reach out to DOT and see about getting Old National and Godby Road shut down for that timeframe of that day.
Well, if the day is the 18th.
December 7th. December 7th-
December 7th is the normal day. Let's see, now, if we're talking about a Sunday, that, we're looking at the 8th of December, the 15th of December, or the 22nd of December. Now, the 22nd gives us a 30-day window plus a couple of days. I mean, I mean, the residents will be there on Sunday morning on the 22nd. I mean, it's close to, close to Christmas and, which is supposed to be, you know, I don't think you'd have as much impact-
I know the date is December 7th right now, but I, just give me a date.
Well, I mean, we're looking at it now because the next time we meet, we're past 30 days. So if the 22nd, if it's possible, the 20s, I mean, Councilwoman-
Ms. Johnson?
I, if we can do the 22nd early, I think 10:00 AM to 11:30 isn't going to be that much impact. I don't think, you know, I don't think we get a whole plethora of complaints with that. I think if we plan it and Communications gets the word out that we're going to have this for the kids down there on the south side of town, and the hours, and.
Would this one be an additional to?
Yeah, I was going to say, so we do have registration for current, for the December 7th.
No, no, this would, this would be the parade if we're going to do it. You know, we're not going to logistically try to put together two. You know, we want our children and throughout the city to enjoy this thing, and by far, there are far more children along the Godby Road corridor than there are that live along the Main Street corridor. I mean, that's not even a contest if you're doing it for the kids, which we are, but so, so, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. I would say if we're going to do it, let's, let's try to plan it. If we can do it the 22nd, that gives us plus 30 days. But, 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 I mean, this is workshops, so we're talking about it. I mean, I mean-
But the kids are-
I don't know, I wouldn't have any problem with my residents on Godby if we plan it and we get the notice out and Communications is letting them know, hey, Sunday-
What time for the- 10:00 AM to 11:30.
Yeah, if they really know, hey, things are going to be shut down, you, you come out and walk the parade route and enjoy, and we have a festive thing, maybe we put our little station there at the Wyatt Rec Center, whereas, you know, we have the frontage there where we have the MC and then the music and everything.
We also, we also have, I think, a community partner or business partner with the Old Kroger, I don't even know what it's called, but that shopping plaza, too, if we needed to do staging there.
So you're saying do the Kroger, you're saying Kroger from the, from the Kroger to the Wyatt Center? Is that what you're saying?
I was thinking from the Kroger to the Southampton Plaza.
Okay, so what about people who have to work? That, I mean, wait, hold on.
That's what we're discussing.
Wait, hold on, I understand, and so I'm asking the question. So what about folks who can't get out of their, their apartments for an hour and a half? Like, that's going to be, like, I mean, I know that there's not many people working on Sundays, but there are some people who work on Sundays.
Right, but that's also true for Main Street.
That's right.
Yeah, but we don't have any, people who are on Main Street have an alternate route. We don't really have anybody living-
I got it.
-on the, on the parade route.
We do. We have an apartment complex, Ivy Chase, they could not get out, and there's no alternative exit out of there, that apartment complex. In terms of working people, though, I do have an idea and a suggestion.
That's a good point, Ivy Chase, I forgot about Ivy Chase.
Here's my suggestion. Well, I didn't forget. I'm thinking about all of this. I have a suggestion, though. Yes, there are some people that absolutely have to get out to work Sunday morning. If Communications works this the way I think they can work it, we can let folks know, again, if the street is going to be closed, if you've got to get to work, we can, we may be able to possibly come up with a, I was thinking about an arrangement where people could park at the police precinct there on Godby, but that's going to be-
It's going to be part of the route.
We need people to line-
So unless we start there, we can start at the, start there at the center, the Rec Center, and go down to Southampton and come back.
That, that, that's a thought.
We need lineup area, a huge parking lot, or, the reason why it works over here is the bank's closed, so there's, we do, we do affect one business, which is the Dog Park and Fly, but we still allow them to have access, and then we have the Health Center. The Health Center gives us the lineup area along with the parking for the bank, so we need an area to be able to put, you know, up to three sessions, sections, and we could, last year, you know, one of the parades was one of the largest that we had, so it could be more than an hour.
I think it's more upside to doing this, and I don't think the disruption on Sunday morning from 10:00 AM to 11:30 is going to be a big, big, a big situation. Obviously, a lot of folks ride martyr along that route. So do folks on December 7th that ride along Main Street's route during those two hours that we've got.
Coming out of the Old Kroger Shopping Plaza, we want me-
So we wouldn't need 30 days. We could do the regularly scheduled time on December 7th because, like I said, we have people registered. I'd prefer not to change the time so that those, because a lot of problems, too, we have, and Jerisha can tell you, is those high schools are still in school, and the bands, once you get out of school, they don't come.
Right.
So there's, we want to make sure the participation doesn't change because we're changing the date. If we stayed on Godby-
If we stay on Godby, we're going to-
There's no GOT, GOT.
Shopping Plaza and go down to Southampton, I don't have to get an approval from DOT because that's not-
That's all up.
Okay, okay.
So there would be no change.
Godby Road, I mean, the Old National, that I would have to get approval to be able to shut down.
Okay.
But if we're coming out of the-
Chief, can you go to the microphone, please?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
If we're coming out of the Old Kroger Shopping Plaza, there would be no need, so we can continue with the scheduled date of December 7th.
Okay.
Now, the other good upside to this is along Godby Road, if you're talking from the Old Kroger, from, from Godby and Old National from the corner, if we stage from there.
Because we can stage right there in that sky view, in which we can stage-
Right, right, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the Old Kroger Plaza there. The right side of Godby is pretty much unencumbered until you get to Old Town Villa, until you get to 2200. That's the only apartment, really, that you're going to have an issue with, but you're saying we absolutely have to close both, what if one lane on the other side is available?
No, we cannot, Councilman Karn, because if somebody not paying attention, driving down, and they hit somebody in the parade, the city will be liable.
All right, I hear you on that. We want to be safe with it. Well, if the 7th works better, and like you said, you guys are already set for the bands and everyone that comes on the 7th, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that date if we can make it work logistically, if we can get enough word out to folks that we will be closed now in 10 o'clock to 11:30, I don't have an issue with it. If they've got enough notice and we get enough communication in our apartment complexes, if Communications really lets them know, and this is going to be a great thing and a big celebration, I think the pros outweigh the cons.
Now, one thing that I will have, one thing I will have, the LED screen placed at the Godby Road precinct maybe for a week if it's not being used anywhere else, and even if they don't hear from Communication, if you're traveling up and down Godby Road, you will see that.
That's a good idea.
So the 7th is a Saturday, though?
Yes.
So we're, okay, we're shutting down on a Saturday. All right.
Instead of the Sunday.
Instead of the Sunday.
I think the location where you're talking, because we did several, we talked about Phoenix coming up, we did talk about Kroger, but we thought it would be a shorter parade, but it won't inconvenience. I think that's the main concern, is making sure people that need to go where they need to go can get out, and I just don't feel safe having a, a lane open with my, with babies, my children out there, I just don't feel comfortable.
We don't need any more liability. Let me ask you this, so you're set for Saturday the 7th. Is changing it to Sunday the 8th a big logistical nightmare for those outfits, or can they still bring the vans on the next day?
Let me, let me check with Jerisha who's done the registration.
Because you may get, you may get a few less people that are going to be going to work 10:00 AM on Sunday than 10:00 AM on Saturday.
Yeah, and we do have a few contracts. This is Jerisha Bronson, our program coordinator, that does the logistics along with College Park Police on setting-
We're going to put you to work this Christmas Parade.
It's okay.
Logistically, I think it will be difficult to reach back out to the schools during this time because of Thanksgiving break. If I would have got a window of maybe two weeks ago, it could be, it could be done. But I think with the holiday breaks coming up, we would definitely decrease the number of bands.
Okay, so we need to stick with Saturday.
I would suggest yes.
Well, I don't, well, I'm, I'm still okay with it if you, it's up to you. I think, I think it's worth the stretch. And, you know, we got to try some new stuff, try it. If it, if it doesn't work out, it's fine, but if we have enough warning and enough lead-up time, and if Communications is doing their thing in our apartment communities and letting them know this is going to be a great event, it's going to be a celebration, it's going to be the first time that we're celebrating Christmas on the south side of this city, in that way, I think it's worth it.
And I think we're putting the LED screen, even if people don't check and get the communication, if they're traveling up and down Godby Road, you will see the LED screen, and it'll have all the information, the date and time of the parade, and also we'll get some kind of clip that say traffic will be impacted, no traffic will be allowed to travel during that timeframe on Godby Road. So I think we can make it work.
And Recreation will do our part, too, also getting out into the, the community and spreading the information also to let them know. Our staff's happy to do that. Ron will be right out there pounding the pavement, so.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a discussion from, it's a presentation from Train Technologies on Energy Savings Performance Contracting. Good evening.
Name is Walter Reed, Senior Comprehensive Solutions Account Executive.
I'm Tommy Brown, also Senior Energy Solutions Account Executive.
Tonight, we're gonna present a few slides about energy savings performance contracting. Next, please. So, what is, I'm gonna say ESPC from now on, so I don't have to say the entire title. Is that, is that okay? Okay, good. So, it's a method of using future energy savings to offset costs of facility improvements or pretty upgrades to do your capital improvements throughout the city, right? Typically funded through a capital loan, so there's a debt associated with it. It typically goes between seven to 20 years, and that is actually laid out by the state. Savings are greater than the loan premium, that's the way the contract has to be set up. If not, the contract will be voided by the state. The process allows for the best long-term solution, and the energy savings are guaranteed. So, if we promise to save, let's say, $1,000, and we only save 800, then we'll have to make you a hold for the other 200 per the contract. If you look up, you'll see for a project that's $3 million, we're gonna use, you know, arbitrary numbers, that will be about $20,000 per year. Sorry. Next, please. Again, what is it? You take your gas cost, your electric cost, your water cost, you'll see those will be the red portion of the circle, and the savings will be the green portion. We'll take the savings from all three, also add renewable energy if it's there, and that total would be the total savings that you would have for the contract. Next, please. This way, but look if the actual contract or, on the left-hand side is your current operating cost. You know, you have your maintenance and operations, your gas and your electric, based upon your utilities. Once, if you decide to move forward with the contract, the green portion is the excess savings. And that savings typically is about 25% that we'll be able to lower utility bills through, throughout the cost of the contract. So, in the future, you'll have your excess savings, your investment cost, that will be the debt service, and you'll see as your maintenance and operations is, are still there, gas and electric, but it's a lot smaller than before. We put in high-quality, efficient lighting, high-efficiency air conditioning or HVAC equipment. We improve the energy reduction and awareness throughout the city, ongoing support and auditing, which is part, every year, we do measurement and verification for the contract to ensure that what we say we're giving you, you actually get. And we use state-of-the-art building automation. Next slide, please. Okay. Why undertake an ESPC? To address your deferred maintenance. We understand that most municipalities don't have a few million dollars lying around to make a widespread capital improvement plan, so energy savings performance contracting allows you to do so. Funding challenges, again, goes to the money. There's usually not a barrel of money sitting around to help offset some of the costs and make the improvements. Sustainable environmental concerns, as we know, that's been a challenge as we, as we continue to use energy the way that we're using it now. That leads to some of the environmental concerns that we may have. LEED, if that's anything that you guys are interested in, LEED, Energy Star Certification, and technology innovation, technology changes daily. We would put the state-of-the-art equipment, lighting and HVAC equipment throughout the city. Modernize building infrastructure in doing so. Next slide, please.
Next slide. So, I wanted to talk to you about a peer customer that we did a performance contractor ESPC with a few years back. It's Georgia World Congress Center, and I hope y'all are aware of them. We did a $28 million capital project that was offset by $2 million in annual energy savings. We received over $400,000 in Georgia, or we applied for it, and the Georgia World Congress Center received over $400,000 in Georgia Power rebates and some other incentives that went along with it. Inside the project, we replaced over 60,000 LED light fixtures inside of the Congress Center, as well as over 6,000 tons of cooling capacity and, and over 1,000 water fixtures. To kind of put that in perspective, the International Convention Center here, you have about 1,500 tons of cooling, so this would be about four times the amount of cooling. So, it's a, it's a big, it was a big project for us, we're really proud of it. Next slide. So, this is kind of what the savings looked like in the first year, over 23 million kilowatt hours in, in energy savings, 20 million gallons of water savings, and they reduced their overall spend by about 43%. As part of the project, they successfully applied for and were certified LEED Gold. At the time, it was the largest LEED Gold Convention Center in the world, so. And then over in the pie chart on the right, you can kind of see where some of those savings came from, lighting, central cooling plant upgrades and water retrofits. Next slide. And so, this is kind of where we are in the lifetime of that contract, so we're in year seven of the guaranteed period. They've saved, or they've said guaranteed savings of over $15 million. They've actually saved over $17 million. And then in the, in the graphic in the middle there, those are some of the sustainability impacts of the seven years of savings that they've had, so. Next slide, and one more. And so, this is the process for performance contracting. It's laid out by the state of Georgia in slightly different terms, but there's really an introductory period, understanding what it looks like, quantifying the opportunity. The state of Georgia calls that project determination, and at that point, you would go out for procurement to select a performance contracting partner like Train. Once you've selected that partner, they perform what's called an investment-grade audit. That audit proves the validity of the project, and then you would go to construction after that. So, that's, that's what we've got to share with you today. Any questions on it?
Thanks so much. We'll start with Councilmember Carr.
All right, thank you. Tommy Brown, you know Bobby Brown's older brother's name, Tommy Brown?
I did not.
You don't look like him.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's his brother. He was his manager for years.
Nice.
Yeah, that's funny.
Good company.
Question, I guess the first question, I'm assuming you sat down with the City Manager about all of this, of course. But have you sat down with Hugh Richardson?
No.
Or have you sat down with Yanis Barna?
No.
Okay, well, at some point, he was our power director and Yanis handles the GICC. But at the end of the day, they are report to the City Manager. So, I mean, you're talking to the right, right person. But one of the things they may kind of help you to kind of understand is that, you know, energy savings for us as a city is a little bit of a different equation because we have our own not-for-profit, you know, we're with MEAG, we're not with Georgia Power, Greystone and all of that business. And I see electric being the biggest piece of the pie here, water and gas. We don't have many natural gas utilities, you know, powered facilities to speak of. So, for us, it's mostly electric. One of the things I did not see in here is I saw the seven-year run of the GWCC, which is, looks good. What I did not see, I see the sustainability impact. What I did not see is the durability of the warranty performance of the project. That's gonna be probably more important to us than the energy savings itself. So, I don't see, tell me about the warranty structure of your lighting, infrastructure, retrofits. That's what I wanna hear about.
Yeah, great question. I'll split it up because Walter's got more experience on some of that than I do, but it, on the HVAC side of things, it's up to the customer. Walter mentioned it's the best value solution, so if you want five years warranty, if you want 10, we can build that in. It's, it's a part of the collaborative process of identifying and then on lighting.
Yeah, for lighting, same thing. So, lighting typically gives, each lighting company, lighting manufacturer, has a standard warranty, but if you like to stretch out the years of the warranty, we can, we can do that. We also, for the HVAC portion of it, will offer a maintenance contract to ensure that your team won't be saddled with, with new equipment and not being known how to operate. We can provide training for it as well as a maintenance contract on anything that we would have. And typically for, there is no real maintenance for LED light, right? Once it's in, they either gonna fail or they're gonna run. We're gonna make sure that we're putting in, it's gonna be top-notch equipment.
Understood. Well, what I'd like to see with your GWCC study and your project impact is in that seven years of impact, they've been going seven years with your retrofit, is that right?
Yeah.
I wanna know, you know, lighting replacement and lighting control systems replacement, how many times have they had to go over? Have, are the bulbs still going from seven years ago, or did they replace them three times? You know, or, you know, this, this type of stuff. So, that, that's my interest. I mean, the energy savings is great, but for us, you know, it's almost the equivalent of taking some money out of this pocket and putting it in this one.
I understand.
So, so, so that's, it's great, but that's not, you know, I'd rather have a, you know, you know, lighting system that lasts 20 years. That's worth, that's worth something to, to us, you know. So, I'd like to see that. So, if you can bring back the seven years of replacement cost, the seven years of control systems warranty and the HVAC replacements, do you have the same system in that you had seven years ago at the GWCC? And will they say it's working as it was when you put it in seven years ago? Have they had to repair it or adjust it and fix it or replace it or whatnot? So, I'd like to see that lifetime project impact, that portion of it for me.
Okay, I can do that.
All right.
Councilmember Arnold?
I don't have any questions. I just, I agree with the statement that was made earlier of if you all haven't had the opportunity to speak to Hugh Richardson or to Yanis Barna, I would also recommend that you have those conversations, especially before coming back with the additional information that's being requested so that we can be educated a little bit more about our particular situation and how this could benefit the city.
Councilmember Gay?
Thank you for bringing your presentation. Thank you, City Manager, for bringing them. The only thing I would add to it is that I like the direction we're going in when we start talking about saving money. I would like for us to do the same when it comes to procurement, start having no conversations as well as our information of, you know, our communication amongst apartments to avoid a lot of duplication and... But, but back to you all, I will tell you that we just, this council just voted for LEED certification at the Convention Center, and what first thing came in my mind, the $125,000 could have, from what you just said, it probably could have paid for if we had done a contract. And the other thing I wanna tell you is that I agree that our HVAC in this building, I can't speak for other buildings, but I mean, for this building, it definitely need to be retrofitted.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
1% that you already include...
Dr. Edard Dieron, could you move the microphone?
The cost you already include here, which all the localities like, and I mean, this something, I've worked with Ceman, Johnston Control, but once you all do the investment with, oh, audit, okay, and then let's say for some reason, the council don't go along with the cost, you know, I mean, you know, the cost should be. Because if they do all the studies and then the governing body said, no, you know, they're not going, there's a cost. It's not just for free.
So, what he's, what he's asking during the process, so up until the investment-grade audit, it's at risk to us, right? And then once we get to investment-grade audit, the contract that we would sign would say, if you move forward, the cost of our investment-grade audit gets rolled into the contract. If not, it's a break-even fee. And a break-even fee is typically our engineering costs, and that'll be laid out before we step forward to any facility to do an IGA, investment-grade audit.
The cost kicks in for us in which square again?
Investment-grade audit.
Investment and define our proposals.
So, our initial preliminary audit, our initial surveys, it's on us. If, and once, because by the time the investment-grade audit comes, that's when Tommy mentioned we'd have to go for the procurement process you were asking for, right? It'd be an RFQ or an RFP, whatever you wanna go for. Then once we decide who we're gonna move forward with, whether the ESCO, of course, we hope it's us, then we, they would move forward. But even if it's not us, if you get to the IGA portion and you decide not to move forward with the contract, then there will be a breakage fee from whoever you deal with.
What does that look like average?
So, it's, so this, this entire contract vehicle is similar to like a design-build type project, so we typically say that's somewhere, if you look at a typical design, it's 5% to 10%. It would not be that case here. It'd be somewhere closer to 2% to 4%.
Yeah, I need a number.
We wouldn't know the number until we actually go, right? Because we don't, we may think we know based upon what we've seen in the International Congress Center. We actually supply the equipment over there and we help out with your current maintenance provider. So, we have a general idea just on the HVAC equipment. We haven't done a survey on your lighting or anything like that, but...
If it's, if it's a million-dollar project, then you're looking at $20,000 to $40,000 of breakage fee, just to put like round numbers together, so.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll probably know, you know, if it's worth it by the time we get to the project scope.
That's the hope.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's why there's so many stages. It's, it's a lot of work and for both sides, and it only makes sense when you uncover any pitfalls early. That's really the, the process, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Have a good night, all.
You too. We will see everyone back for the regular meeting at 7:30.